Okay, Mr. Mayor, we live.
Great, thank you. So today is July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. The time is five ten P. M. and I'm calling to order this the Ballpark City Council Special Meeting. City Chief Deputy City Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Avila. Councilmember Garcia. Is not present. Councilmember Hernandez. Is not present. Mayor Protem Damian.
Here.
And Mayor Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. Uh, next, we're gonna move on to public communication. Anybody looking to speak? Now is your time.
Mayor, I'm here.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
I heard during the week that you guys had a special meeting last week to promote a gentleman to, uh, director. And one of the things is it was kinda sneaky for you guys to do it on a Thursday, you know, a week before, you know, coming for City Council on a Wednesday. You guys approved that. Basically, to my point of view, and I have a lot of experience on hiring and firing people, is that you guys just wanted a person right there that would follow up your your rules and regulations, your favoritism, and everything within the city, which is wrong. A person that's in that position has to have enough knowledge of the law for the residents, you know. What you guys did to me, my point of view, and mostly all my friends in my neighborhood, I'm talking maybe two hundred that I talked to since then, they have come to my house and says, how come they had a special meeting? So they want a puppet up there. And that's the way we see it, okay? So what you guys did was very wrong, you know. You should have put it out to the public, whoever was qualified to come in and put their applications for a position like that. We're not talking of a position of a governor or anything. This is a position that has a lot of responsibilities. But if you guys wanna puppet, you gotta yourself a good puppet. But remember this, we're gonna come back. We're gonna come back strong against you guys. Over the twenty years that Rosano was here, he never pulled a fast one like this one. And that's one of the things, you know, the way he voted, except Hernandez voted no. I think he's a little smart for not to vote no, because he's gonna be for election for this coming November. Everybody else, you know, some of you guys have to go through for election. And we'll do everything in my power in my neighborhood not to vote for you guys. Okay? That's just the beginning. At seven o'clock, I'll tell you the rest of it.
Greg Tattle, business owner. Um, at your special meeting last week that was hurriedly done, both the mayor and one other councilperson said that you had, uh, this was all transparent. Only thing you forgot transparent was a person's name that you were trying to push through. That should have been put on the the information for the agenda, but it wasn't put on there, because you didn't want anybody to know what you were doing behind closed doors. Ron Garcia is not qualified for a code enforcement director. Now, you've used the term community director, which goes through a lot of stuff. City planner is not a code enforcement trained person. You people keep hiring people that aren't qualified. You got a city finance director over here with no CPA. She gets a scathing audit from the state that she screwed up. HUD investigates the city because you guys were paying code enforcement out of HUD. And why did we use lose Susie Reyes? Because she wouldn't sign off with Shannon and and Rose. And then we have the police department. Oh, my God. More complaints just keep coming in. And you know what the chief's comment is? I'll get back with you. I'll get back with you. He couldn't even handle the parking over at Royal Coaches. I had to go through code enforcement to get that done, not to help a Ron, because he fought that. But through the other people that were the code enforcement people that are trained to do that, and they did it right. Now then, you've got, you keep bringing in people that aren't qualified. You tried to bring in the city manager that was a girl that had no qualifications, wasn't ever a city manager, had no basic qualifications, was in trouble with Pasadena for fraud. And then you guys wanna hire her, but because I raised a whole bunch of stink and exposed her, she pulled her application out. You people need to maybe hire somebody that's a professional person to look after the backgrounds of these people and see if you're gonna pay him another fifty thousand dollars if he's worth it. This is waste of city money, just like this three million dollar project you got going over here with the city. Um, I can't say that during this meeting, so I apologize to that. Um, but we need to hire competent people that are trained and experts at this stuff. And you are not doing that, and just like your city attorney that's been for fraud and been put up for corruption, but you still got him. And he's the one that screwed up all our weed contracts and stuff too, that the city's eating it. And we've lost millions of dollars in revenue over him because he's incompetent. But do you keep him? Absolutely yes. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else looking to speak, City Clerk? Did anybody fill out their speaker cards?
No, Mayor, not for the five o'clock.
Great, thank you. So at this point, we will move forward with our open session. Uh, we'll hand it over to Sam, our Public Works Director.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, we have put together a brief presentation to give the council an update on the the progress we've made thus far for the Zocalo Civic Center Plaza. So we have today on Zoom, uh, we have Kevin O'Brien, Scott Brady, and Puya Goyayesi. So at this, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to them. And then after the presentation, we can engage into some questions and answer sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. This is Kevin O'Brien with LCPG Architects. I'm the principal here. And just to give an introduction to what we're gonna be showing you today, this is an update on the Zocalo Civic Plaza project. Uh, and it's just gonna give a quick overview. Uh, many of you have already seen this before, but we wanted to bring you up to speed on what's going on to bring this project home. And then secondly, we're just gonna be going over some conceptual designs for, um, the City Hall facade redo and potentially an annex building. And these are just studies at this stage, but we wanted to share them with you. So I'm gonna turn it over to Scott Brady with LCPG and let him, uh, explain the the current state of Zocalo Park. Next slide.
To hear how to zoom speaker. I I promote you as a call first. If you see another council member joining, then.
Okay. Are we ready to talk?
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay. Okay, so this is the latest rendering, a bird's eye view of the of the Zocalo. Uh, you can see the city hall is up in your upper right corner. The retail building is further, further west. Next slide. This is the, uh, this is basically the site plan, uh, just to, if you look at what we're gonna discuss, the upper top where it says not in scope, uh, that currently is not in the cost estimate for the project. Uh, it's an area that the city was considering, uh, buying it at one time, and at this point, it's not, uh, part of the the scope of this project. Next slide. So just to kind of brief you on the preliminary cost estimates, we've had two. We had one, the original one that was rather high, so we had another one uh, done. It came in, uh, just just about two million dollars lower. Uh, but we're considering looking at removing some of the items to bring it down to within nine point five million. There's other potential items that can be removed to bring it down even further if necessary, such as the flower trellises and the retail structure, which came in kind of high, uh, but can be reduced if necessary. Next slide. Uh, one item that's, uh, just so you know, that's it's being worked, and that is the the street narrowing, uh, the red highlighted area that you can see, that is the area, the scope that's being added to the project. Uh, there's a traffic study performed, and the the result was basically, um, that, uh, the left turn lane onto Ramona, uh, going on North Main needed to be extended. That's the primary comments of the traffic study, uh, that came out of it. Also, to go to the next slide, I'm, yes. Okay, yeah. So here's the detail. So basically, uh, the traffic study, if you look at the bottom left, uh, that's North Main. We've extended, uh, or will extend the left turn lane. That's to take into account the, uh, the extra traffic that may be required to make a left turn there. Uh, then the street narrowing improves the safety by reducing the speed. Uh, there's gonna be an installation of a hybrid beacon, right, the crosswalk right in front of the City Hall, which will significantly improve the safety of the pedestrians, the pedestrians. Again, the left turn lane, uh, going north main onto Ramona, uh, has, uh, been added to reduce any backup. Uh, the, uh, dissolve, the 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 left turn lane also allows, uh, uh, a smaller, I guess, should say, a turn into the, uh, into the alley for access, which, uh, I don't know, I don't think it currently does that. And then, uh, there's also been, uh, or will be a traffic, a future traffic signal at Bogart. I think that's the last slide. Just go to the next slide, just in case. Uh, Paul, you wanna talk about the project schedule?
Sure. Uh, so, uh, right now, currently, we are going through the plan check corrections. And we are also sending a street narrowing, uh, uh, street narrowing sub beetle alongside with the plan check for a back check sub beetle altogether at the end of the August. And we are hoping to start the, uh, beating by the early September, end of August. That's it.
You, uh, any questions?
At at this time, if we have any questions on the Zocalo, uh, either estimate or timeline, we can take those, but we are, uh, we can go into to speak about the, um, annex and facade.
Yeah, I have a question, Sam, before you move on to the annex.
Yeah.
Uh, so going back to the the cost, uh, estimate summary.
Can we put that slide back up? Thank you.
So right now, the second cost estimate is ten point eight million dollars. But you can reduce that to nine point five with the removal of phase three, which is the parcel and water feature. Where exactly is the parcel and water feature? Is that the one in front of City Hall?
Yeah, that's the one that I first mentioned. No, goodness, go back to the two slides back. That was the one that I said is not in scope, as referenced. Oh, no, go back, sorry. One more slide. Nope. Oh, to the right, two more. There, there. The very top where it says not in scope.
Okay, so that's that, the building that we were looking to purchase.
Right.
That's right.
Towards there. So that's phase three.
Right. Uh, you're you're correct, uh, Mayor Protem. So thi- this is that that space that connects the Zocalo to Ramona, which is not currently city-owned. So it 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 is part of the design. Uh, it was part of the original first, and I believe the second cost estimates, but we think that, and 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 we know we're not going to build that because we don't own it, so we know that there's cost savings there, and that's how we arrived to the nine point five in addition to removing the water feature.
And where exactly is the water feature? You can point that out to me, please.
The very, there you go. Yeah, that's where the, it's where the cursor is right now. It's, uh, the water feature is surrounding the pavilion area.
Got it. Do we know what the cost, uh, the cost is for that water feature alone?
That, I don't have it in front of me, but I, my memory tells me the water feature was about, um, seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. Isn't that right, Sam?
Yes, uh, that is correct. So in the first estimate, it was seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and the second estimate, it was around, uh, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, um, yeah, so we can, uh, you make these sort of adjustments now, even though it's been designed, we can, um, talk about and discuss what to remove, and we decided that, uh, the water feature is probably one of the most easiest and, um, prudent, uh, scope of works to remove so that we can lower the cost, overall cost.
Okay, uh, so if we if we go with the nine point five million, that will remove the parcel and it will remove the water feature.
Correct.
What about the retail structure?
The retail structure will remain. Uh, we do have, um, an option. Um, well, if if we step back a little bit and cost and and just talk about general cost estimates in this in this day and age, um, it's hard to obtain a concrete estimate. As you saw, we have three wildly different estimates based on on what we're doing. And that's because of the, uh, you know, flex that the construction industry is in right now with inflation, fuel costs, and personnel. And, um, so to get it, to get the most accurate, you know, estimate is to go out to bid and get a real number. And so that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, so roughly, the nine point five will cover the Zocalo buildout, including the, uh, retail, but excluding the water feature and the parcel.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I have a question. Instead of the water feature, what would it look like right there? What's the area where the where the water feature is going to be? What is it going to look like since there won't be any water?
Yes, so see where the blue is in the three D image?
Right.
That's where the water feature, it's, it makes the 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 platform look like it's floating. The water is actually only about an inch deep. It's not very deep, so literally you can walk on it. But the surface is a darker color, so it it actually makes it look like it's deeper than it is. So basically, the design change really doesn't change the way it looks. It just, you lose that effect of the water being on the surface.
But but you do gain, um, additional gathering space.
That's right.
Walking surface.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, good. So it does, so it does expand the actual stage then.
It this, well, no, the stage doesn't extend it. The sitting area probably, so the this, the stage is actually raised about, I don't know, about two feet. So it actually allows more sitting area. I mean, you could literally sit in the water if you wanted to on a hot day, but it allows, I guess, more people to sit and not have to be in the water, because, like I said, the water is only about an inch deep, so, uh, it just, you you lack that water, and it may cool it down a little bit too on a hot day, which is kind of nice, but that that's what you will lose.
Right, okay, alright.
And does that area still have access, uh, for electricity and if we have a concert or people to plug in their equipment and all of that?
The idea is that everything will be maintained as it is. Uh, uh, it's just that you won't have the water and and the fountain, the effects of the water.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, uh, Mark and David, if we can move to the second portion of the presentation, which is the annex and facade. Okay, thanks, alright. Okay, Scott, floor is yours again.
Okay, so, uh, this, the the annex building is to your left. It's that kind of angled building. The idea is to kind of maximize the space up against the the circulation, the driveway that currently is there. Uh, should I take, now I'll take that back. The driveway actually has been moved back to the property line. So it's not, it's not following the existing driveway. The draw, driveway is pushed out to the far left to the existing property line. And that's where the building kind of fits in. Uh, the idea of it as being a basement with two stories and roof access for for gatherings or commu- community gatherings. So, and the idea is that you have this veil, a kind of wall that sits in front of the building, uh, with trellises. That's what you're seeing is the curved area that we'll talk about a little bit later. And the idea, if you can see in plan, the terrace will be pushed out further into the, uh, Zocalo, uh, to better connect. That's the second, uh, floor terrace in front of, uh, is that, sorry, is that building in safety over there on the second floor, Sam?
Y- yeah, for the most part. We we also have a finance department there and other.
Yeah. So the public access into the building, uh, the idea is to extend the terrace out a little bit further into the Zocalo, so you can look in over the Zocalo. Uh, so the idea is adding curved walls and adding trellises that you can see in plan that you'll better see when we go look at the three dimension, three dimensional, uh, views. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So the basement is basically primarily storage, uh, that I I, uh, we were talking about, uh, uh, moving city storage from an existing storage unit. I guess, Sam, you can talk about that if we need to. Uh, but the idea is the basement is moving all city storage to the to the base basement of the annex.
Yes, that is correct. This is what we were referring to at the beginning when we were programming as the City Clerk's archiving, uh, building, so it would be a a a place for, uh, city records and documents to be stored per the, uh, retention policy.
Yeah, I think Lulu had, uh, um, a lot of input on this in terms of trying to find, uh, the storage and and this is basically where that storage would go. Next slide. So the the idea is the first floor, so the building is basically designed not to be specifically one thing. It's designed to be, it could be retail, retail space, it could be, it could be city space, it could be whatever you want it to be. It's designed so, and the first and the second floor could be two separate functions, two two set, separate businesses, for example. The bottom could be retail space, the second floor could be city business. Uh, it's designed to have that, uh, that flexibility, even though it's showing desks and it's showing offices, it doesn't mean this is how the building would be set up, it's just an example. But the main component of the building, at the core of the building, is to the right there that you can see, where when you can come into a vestibule and access different floors and access the roof and access the basement. So, uh, you'd have public restrooms and vestibule to the very bottom right corner there, uh, with an elevator lobby to access all these spaces. The restrooms above that would access, would be accessed for the first floor. Um, and then there's a stair on the outside that you can see that's not colored. It's just kind of on that curved wall that would give you access, uh, to every floor and to the roof. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So the second floor, again, uh, you have access to that, from that curved stair and the vestibule that has the elevator lobby. Uh, and again, the second floor here could be completely separate of the first floor and the roof. Go ahead and the next slide. So the idea of the roof, again, you can access from that curved stair, elevator, uh, um, access for gathering, uh, uh, for community use. Uh, that's the kind of the concept of this building. Let's go to the next slide. Just, I'm not sure what the next slide is. Okay, go back. Um, do we have, is there any questions on this?
I have a question. So what was the purpose of, um, creating a basement? Why? I would assume creating a basement would be more expensive. Why wouldn't be able to do the storage on the first floor?
You could do the storage on the first floor, but the idea is, is, you know, in today's age, um, you know, real estate is very expensive. So if you look at it from a, of the idea of the city expanding and allowing housing and use in other areas, I mean, and and or in this, whatever this function is gonna be, the idea is moving, there's been discussions of moving other city buildings to this building to open up, you know, space for, uh, where real estate again is is expensive. Putting it in the basement is more expensive than putting on the first floor, but it's more of a, uh, considering this, it's as real estate as being expensive as it is. And, uh, storage is basically, it's not, it's really not usable space. And, uh, you don't need the light for it. We're in the first floor. You know, making usable space will allow that to be. So that's kind of the justification. Your, if the city decides to make it first, uh, the first floor storage, you can do that and not do the basement. If it's not within the budget, that's always a possibility.
Yeah, I think, uh, putting a basement is just extra expenditure that we don't need. We have the property. Originally, it was discussed, um, that particular area to use as storage for our city first office and storage, uh, for the police department for different areas. And I think building the basement is just a cost that is not needed, since originally that was not planned for. It was, again, planned for storage area only.
Okay. Sam? Sorry, go ahead.
I wouldn't think it's feasible to plan for a basement when we can create that storage area that's needed on the first floor.
Okay. Sa- Sam, did you wanna add to that at all, uh, in regards to, uh, any mov- moving forward on the floor plans?
Right. So, um, yeah, the idea during our conversations was that, uh, that first floor, it's prominent public space that could be used for, you know, uh, city services, uh, or or retail. And so using it for storage seemed like it was, um, not a a a best use of that space when we can take advantage and use it for, uh, for the public. The, um, archiving building does make sense to be, uh, separated and, um, away from from the public space, because it is not a usable space other than to archive, uh, documents. So, um, we can do interest, interesting things with the basement. We can fire protect it. We can lock it out. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, interesting things that we can do so that we can have, uh, big access to city documents and archives. That was the, that was the thought process.
So Sam, I have a question regarding the first and the second floor.
Yes.
So you mentioned that it for retail or office space. So would we then become the landlords and rent these spaces out to retail or office?
Correct. So in in the realm of possibilities of what we can use that, uh, for, that is definitely one one possible use, definitely, of course. It it would be up to the City Council to decide during the programming phase what they would, you know, prefer to use that building for or that space for. But if if we wanted to, uh, engage with, um, commercial, uh, folks to to have, um, you know, s- some retail, then yes, there would have to be some sort of, uh, lease agreement for them to use that space.
Got it.
I don't know if you want to, um, scroll to the elevations, uh, David or Mark, just to show a little bit of that might look like.
Okay, so, uh, this is the overall view. To the left is the annex building. You can kind of get a glimpse of the the blue windows. Um, the City Hall straight ahead, City Council. It's just to the right where you guys are at, or most of you guys. Uh, you're basically standing in the sidewalk in in the middle of Main Street. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is looking at City Council, uh, area just to your right. Uh, the idea again is 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 adding trellises for cover. Uh, and basically kind of not necessarily refacing the the existing building, but kind of giving it a new face. I guess that's maybe the best way to to see to say it. It's not really designing what it looks like in terms of this materiality. It could be stucky, stucco, it could be, um, a a paneling system. A lot of it would depend on the cost. Go to the next slide. So the annex building here is to your left. And again, you have trellises, and the idea is to kind of, to create these interstitial spaces between these round surfaces for possibly meeting areas. Uh, that's what you kind of, kind of that purple kind of cylinder that you can see, that's the concept of it. Uh, you can see that the stairs on just under the trellis gives you access to the roof. Actually, go to the next slide. I think we have some. Yeah, so this is the the roof deck that's above that would overlook the Zocalo. Uh, you can see the stair kind of following the wall that I mentioned earlier that gives you access to the roof without having to go into into the businesses, whatever they are, on the first and second floor. You go to the next slide. Um, was there a question?
Rest restroom access, uh, from from the terrace.
Yeah, if you go back to the plan, please. Yeah, there you go. Uh, there are no restrooms at that level, at the roof level. There we go. Yeah, but I mean, if that was something that was determined to be important, then. There we go. Yeah, but I mean, if that was something that was determined to be important, then of course that could be looked at. Because the restrooms at the first and second level, you can see they're stacking to, you know, uh be cost effective and stack the plumbing and. If if it was determined that public restrooms at that level were important, then they could certainly be added. Just to add to that, though, it's, it's, we go back to the last slide. So you see, the idea is the vestibule that you see there in the bottom right corner. Where the elevator is, not everyone may want to take the stairs. Yeah, the idea is you go into that vestibule, it's 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 separate from the business that's there. Uh and you could come into the lobby and access the bathrooms there, if that's what the city decides. It's kind of like how you have it now, right outside, on the first floor, you have restrooms uh that are usable, this could be that same space. If you decide to operate that way.
So what exactly would be, I mean, I know it's a sitting area, the purpose of the roof?
Well, the the way we were. Sure, the the way we were thinking about it is because the the roof deck at, on this building, has a. Great vantage point out to Zokolo, because we're, one of the things we're doing is we're imagining it with the annex and with the facade treatment. Is that Zokolo is essentially already built at that stage, so Zokolo is something that's there and. The view out into the park is going to be pretty spectacular, so there was a lot of discussion about how to take advantage of that, so. Um the a usable green roof is what came to mind for, you know, things like. Receptions, wedding receptions, or things like that. A lot of ideas were thrown out there about potential uses, but. It was primarily, you know, a an idea about limited public use or controlled public use, I guess you could say.
Well, I'm thinking if it's used for receptions or what have you, we would need restroom accesses up there. Would be a bit inconvenient to have to go downstairs to use a restroom. A sitting area like that for gatherings, I would think it would need a restroom.
That's a great point. It could definitely be added.
And that makes a lot of sense.
Yep. Okay, uh go to the next slide. This is just the street level view of walking into the city hall from uh from the. Guess from the south, so the city hall, this council chamber is just to your right. Uh go to the next slide. Uh this is the view of the terrace that I was mentioning earlier, extending out from the second floor, onto the Zokolo. Next slide. Uh this is just further approaching uh the city hall to your right and the uh. That's the council chamber to your right, the city hall to your left. And the idea is to add a kiosk, so people can access the information uh down on this, the main floor here. You can see that straight ahead, next slide. Uh this is, this is the view of the annex building uh without the wall that you, that we were, uh showed on the previous uh. View, so you can see how that the stair gives you access to the roof. And you can kind of see, better see, the idea is that this is just a preliminary view of the annex building, it's not designed. It's just the idea of it having plenty of windows, looking into the Zokolo, uh allowing light and and being more open and transparent. Uh next slide. Here's just another view, the annex building to your left and the stair to your right, going up to the roof. And also too, as you can see, the stair bridges over to the second floor also too. Next slide. Uh here's this similar view, just transparent, where you're looking through the wall, the wall actually would not be transparent like this. Next view, next slide. Um okay, next slide. That's it. Any questions?
Yes, I have questions. Um yes, thank you. Um what is, okay, so the annex is a new building that's being proposed, right?
Yes.
And what is the square footage?
Uh, probably do we have that number?
Uh each floor is about three thousand six hundred square feet. So the basement plus first floor, second floor and roof.
Okay, so basement, first, second and roof, so, so if we looked at the number of floors, there are four.
Uh well, there's, there's a basement, three floors and a roof deck, so that would be basically by. It was two floors, but basement basements, you do not consider like a floor.
So I'm I'm trying to, I'm trying to like understand like the mass of the building, so. So there's a first floor and a second floor, there's a roof and there's a basement, so each floor is going to have about nine hundred square feet?
Uh thirty-six hundred square.
Oh, thirty-six hundred each.
Yeah, right. So the, yeah, the total usable interior space is about, you know, ten thousand eight hundred square feet. That's not including the roof deck, but it does include the the lower level for storage.
Okay, and um. So the idea of having this annex is for public events? Or I saw some offices in there, or what is the idea of this? What's the purpose of this building?
Well, the, just if I could jump in on that, yeah, the, I think the purpose of this study was really to just. Try to to see what's possible on this site. Um in terms of massing and how it could potentially tie into the the existing city hall and and the future Zokolo too. So I don't know that the the purpose itself was was determined exactly, it was just what's possible. Uh more than anything, and some of the ideas that were thrown out were definitely uh functions that were related to public use. Uh functions related to expanding um areas for for the city hall to be able to use. Uh things like the storage, but also, you know, potential uh staff space, office space and things like that. Um so a lot of ideas were thrown out there just to see what what is possible, really.
Mm-hmm, okay, and I'm I I'm glad you mentioned the rendering because I. I I'm glad that you pre-present the rendering as it is, just to give a visual. Um and help, that allows us to follow along, but I also recognize that, you know, the. The materials and um there's a lot that needs to be included at a later time, so my next question is. What action are we taking, Sam, with regard to the annex? Because it's it's very preliminary rendering, it looks like, it doesn't look like. We don't know what materials, the colors, the, you know, it doesn't look like it's been um. It's really been fleshed out.
Yeah, that that is correct, so i- i- if I can step back just a little bit and 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 address the the first question. Just a little bit more, i- i- this sort of uh is is more of an evolution. It it started with us looking for a place to have what we what we refer to as. The city clerks archiving building. And so one of the uh ideas that came up early on before we went to Sokolo was to look at that space. Because it's been empty, an empty lot for a long time, and see if we can do some sort of archiving building there. But once we started taking a look at that space, we we realized that, hey, we 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 can do something interesting here. Uh i- it's bigger than what a uh city clerks archiving building would require. But then, you know, let's let's see what else we can um create or think about or propose. There is no action being required, the the only uh objective for today is to provide a. Um an update and see if we're on the right track, maybe not on the right track, but the deliberable for this is just going to be a conceptual design. So no, no material selected, no uh programming for the building, just a rendering of what could be.
Okay, and you're asking us to just look at what could be and provide direction?
Correct.
Um kind of on fleshing out, fleshing out the details of this addition?
Correct. Um yeah, so the only deliverable that um Laknyana is is um, you know. Going to do is is just provide the final conceptual design for something that we can use in the future to. Uh seek funding or uh, you know, change it or maybe find some programming uh uh use for it. So um just to have something tangible, um you know, on our.
Mm-hmm.
Uh repertoire.
Yeah, and um what would be the cost of this building?
Scott? I I think we have it.
Oh yeah, I think probably we did a preliminary estimate on this, what was the number?
Uh so we are estimating it costs to be around ten million dollar, including the facade. So this is a very rough cost estimate because of the fluctuations in a cost estimations. So this is a very rough estimate for preliminary conceptual.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and if we were, uh Puya, can you break it out uh between facade and building so that we can get a better understanding?
Uh uh I believe the building was about uh uh six million dollar and four million dollar for facade.
Okay, yeah, and I I just ask these questions um so that we can think through. How this really integrates into city hall and as as it is. Um you know, the access of the second floor, the access of the third floor. Um can be a little confusing for our public. And so the reason why I was asking about the purpose of this building is to think through, you know, those. Like what are we, what are, what are we creating for the public? How how do we encourage access to the public and how do we integrate this into city hall? Um how does it best integrate, you know, because as a building, it looks great. Um but that's a lot of money and we definitely want to be very thoughtful and very purposeful. About creating a space like this and what it really serves. So um I think like on initial concept, I'm willing to explore it. But I'd really like us to think through, you know, who's going to be housed at this building? Um is it going to be so that the public can more easily access the first floor? Is it because of the ADA access? Is it, you know, is there going to be? Um how does this building integrate into the larger city hall, into the police department, third level, second level? You know, those are the kinds of of questions and the conversation I think I'd like us to have.
Yeah, I think Monica, to add to that, I I think part of the conversations that we had initially uh as a group. And obviously, you know, you guys weren't part of that conversation, is it's really about what your civic center or your city hall wants to be. I mean, a lot of, in a lot of cases, you know, uh you have a lot of centralized functions in in this space. I mean, the Zokolo comes in, it's going to be beautiful, people are going to want to come, it's just a way to enhance that service back to the community. For example, I mean, a lot of city halls, you may add a library, so I mean, if that's something that becomes. Uh in fact, I I don't even think the city actually has a library, other than the county may have one, but if it's something that is important to the city. It's something that you talk about and maybe there's funding, uh state funding for something like that, so. I think there's a lot of things, libraries one example, but there's other services the city can provide to bring people down to the to the center. To to serve the community and 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 I mean, we could have that conversation about all the different possibilities. That that are uh that are there to do, it just depends on what you want your civic center or your city hall. To be in this community, and I think that's definitely a good conversation to have, and that's what the annex building can give you. To kind of build on this idea of Zokolo and the city hall and the council. And uh it just gives you that, it just gives you, it gives the community more if if if. The funding's available or if you can find funding from the state, I mean, I think Sam's kind of taking that action to initiate that, but. Uh I, that's kind of the concept, there are the ideas that we kind of talked about in the beginning of the project.
Mm-hmm, and that's good to know, um and I think that the city council, you know, should have that conversation and. Really, really be deliberate and deliberate on the purpose of this building. Um for me, I I mean, you know, with the money, ten million dollars is, that's a a solid investment. And if we're trying to tie it into the Zokolo, the questions that I have are, does the Zokolo have restrooms on site?
The the retail building does.
Okay, good. Um and then if we really are truly ti- trying to tie the city hall site to the Zokolo. Then what comes to mind for me is the pedestrian access and safety. Because we're encouraging connectivity without really building in um the connection. And and a safe connection, if any one of us have tried to cross from city hall to this uh. The site of the Zokolo, you know what I mean? And so, you know, I would say if we're gonna go out and. Create an annex building that is speaking to the Zokolo. Then I think what we need to do as well is look at the connectivity, do we create a bridge? Um do we create, you know, how do we, how do we really truly create that connectivity for people to access both sites? Um because otherwise, it just looks pretty, but what is truly the access?
That that's a good point, uh uh bridge actually would be great, but can we, can you go back to slides about the original presentation on the Zokolo and the plan? Just I, maybe I'll just give you uh an overlay of what we currently have and see if it, it meets uh. Yeah, uh let's see, in the with the right, no, uh go to the right, two more slides, two more slides. One uh one more slide. One more slide. Yeah, yeah, but zoom out, okay. No, next, that slide at the left, yeah, there you go.
That's it, uh uh there may be a little bit of a lag.
So let me just show you, sorry, Monica, this doesn't have everything uh to kind of maybe help you kind of. I I as an architect, I know seeing things are a lot easier uh when you're used to doing it, but. Okay, so let me just kind of give you the reference here and to tell you what we've kind of done to help, help take care of what you're talking about. I mean, a bridge would be ideal, I just, it's not, it's cost effective, uh but it's a great idea. So at the top of the red lines you see there is the city hall, okay? And that, the concern was safety and traffic being too fast. And, you know, having so many turn, you know, you have all these streets, it's kind of like a bottleneck, everything kind of coming together. To kind of create a lot of chaos, so by adding Zokolo, it kind of takes that chaos and actually pushes it out to. The outer areas of the civic center or the Zokolo or the city hall, whatever you want to call it. And so what what we've done here is we've narrowed the street down, so and slowed the the traffic down. So now you have just one path of traffic coming through. And as you get past, if you can see right in the center there where it's a hybrid beacon signalized crosswalk, can you see that? There you go. So what we've done is we've made that extension from the the city hall plaza, that's what we're calling it, up above that to the Zokolo. And so we've added a center divider for, and we've added the the this crosswalk, just one crosswalk. Not two, just one crosswalk, and it's going to have a signalized hybrid beacon that will basically uh. Have cars, I think it's actually gonna, we, it's not designed yet, but the idea of it is to either slow or tell cars to basically stop. And uh that's currently what the plan the Zokolo has uh integrated into it to help deal with what you're talking about exactly.
Yeah, so we're we're looking, we're looking into e- either a a hawk system or some other pedestrian activated system. So when they want to cross the street, they push a button and it activates.
Mm-hmm, okay, well, all of that is good, and I'm glad that it's been, you know, thought through and incorporated. The one thing that I would say is, when I hear about medians, um I I do encourage. The fire department to be involved in the review of this, uh because. Part of the challenge is, you know, having the access for for vehicular circulation and especially emergency vehicles. Um so I, we can't lose sight of, you know, there are two purposes here, one to have traffic flowing through. Um and and then also to create a safe environment for the pedestrians. So, you know, yes, medians are great, uh we've had medians in the past along Main Avenue. And they look beautiful, uh we had to remove them because of. Emergency vehicles not being able to get through, especially on a bottleneck like this. So I would just ask that the fire department review this and provide their input as well. And then also our police department, you know, as long as they have access and alternative routes.
Yeah, the the police department will still have access to the driveway that they have there on the left, and they have the access through the back uh to Bogart. So that's still maintained, regardless, they technically don't even have to drive through the center here. Uh but I I think, Sam, I get, that's a good point, I think uh it's something that we should have the review. Uh, but I, I think Sam, I get, that's a good point. I think uh, it's something that we should have the review done just to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, thank you.
Agreed. It's an excellent point.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Um, so I do have a question. So, the, because I'm a little confused. Uh, I know the Zoccolo is one project and this annex building is another. But when you are, I, I'm looking at the design for the council chamber, uh, chamber facade and all that, uh, where the flags are and all those planters are at City Hall, is, is the, I guess the upgrade of the front of City Hall, is that included within the Zoccolo price or is this included with the annex building price? Like where the flags are at, if you go to this, if you go to the um, what slide is this? I guess it's number.
I think we're talking about the facade, so go down, go to the, toward the end of the presentation. Yeah.
Yeah, kind of where the flags are at. So that area there in the front, where the flags are, and I believe it was gonna be a veteran memorial, from what I recall.
That's correct.
All that, all that new facelift there to City Hall, is that gonna be part of the Zoccolo phase and it's gonna be part of the nine point five million? Or is this part of the annex building and it's gonna be part of the um, the, the annex cost?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor Protem, for that question. So, uh, right where the flags are at, that is currently part of the Zoccolo plan.
Okay. Okay, so that's included within the nine point five?
That is correct.
Okay, and then the ten million is the annex building plus all those other upgrades that, I don't know what you would call that, kind of hallway there that is covered, uh, where the kiosk is gonna be and all that?
Yeah, yeah, i- is, we, we just refer to it as a facade or, or a facelift uh, to the uh, City Hall building.
Got it, okay, alright.
Front grass area of the council chambers is included in the Zoccolo, all the grass area and the trees, just not the building itself.
Yeah, so it sort of follows the uh, existing concrete path that is gonna be installed uh, during Zoccolo.
Does that include the monument that we had talked about?
That turns memorial? Yeah, so that, where the flags that, that uh, Mayor Protem just mentioned, that, that's, it's, it's not been designed, it's an allocated space for that. I think that, the uh, previously, uh, the idea was they wanted to, uh, the city wanted to back in two thousand fifteen, wanted to leave that as a separate design to uh, really get that focused into something that really uh, is coordinated with what the community wants. So uh, right now it's basically an allocated area. The flags are put there knowing that there's gonna be some kind of monument or memorial in that space. Yeah, so right now there's just the power that's there for it, for lighting and, and uh, and at some point in time when uh, it's ready to go, then it can be designed. Yeah, there's a better view. So the flags, the idea of the flags kind of will encompass uh, the memorial down below, whether it's, um, veterans within the city or however it's designed. I think, yeah, you can see there's kind of a, a, a massing there. That is not, that's just as a placeholder, that's actually not, uh, i- in the drawings that are for construction, there's just, it's, it's, there's, it's flat, there's nothing there.
So the city logo is not there either?
No, the city logo is there, that's not the, so if you can put the, the cursor back behind underneath the flags, no, go further back. No, to the right though, to the right, down, 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 right there, oh, up a little bit, right there. That little block of concrete does not exist. That's the memorial. The items that you see in front, the circular item, uh, actually too, it's, it's the city seal, it doesn't quite look like that. It's much smaller, but the city seal and the Baldwin Park uh, plaque that you see behind that, out to the left, a little bit, to the left, that remain, that's part of the Zoccolo. It's being constructed and the city seal just below that, that's, yeah, but it's much smaller, it's not, uh, I think that's an, this is an older version of what it's supposed to be.
And how much space is being allocated for the memorial? How much space are you allowing for that section?
That space between the, the five flags there?
How big is that?
Uh, well, the width, it's, it's kind of a circular, uh, what is, a circular width. Yeah, look, there you go. So, right, yeah, right there. But more to the right though, not to the left. The flags are kind of centered around, yeah. So the width of that is about four feet and then you can go, you know, the, the, I don't know how to describe, the, the, the length of the, the round length of that is gonna be probably about thirty feet, thirty to thirty-five feet.
Yeah, so to, to address Mayor Protem's question, that would be done as part of Zoccolo. It's not gonna look quite like the rendering is showing it, but it, it's not part of the facade.
So how will we know what it will look like, uh, uh, Sam?
We, we have a few render, does the um, does that first render, the, the, that we showed, does that show?
That is the most accurate up to date.
So if you can zoom in to, to this area, we'll see what that, there it is. So that space will be part of Zoccolo.
So you can see the seal, you can see the City Hall uh, plaque behind that, not, a little bit higher on the cursor, right there. And then you can see that behind that, where the memorial goes, there's really nothing there yet because it's not designed. You have light fixtures, you have banners, you have flags, but you do not have any kind of memorial with names on it, uh, in, in depictions. That's to, that's TBD.
But that can be easily added if the uh, council, you know.
What's to the right of those blue flags, that circle? What is that?
It's a sitting area that looks out into the park. So it's at the same level as this, as the uh, when you exit this council chamber, you would go to the left and it's a path that takes you right to a little sitting area, so you can sit there and look out into the park. And along that path is the same path where you would have the kiosk, the, the future kiosk. Does that make sense?
So now, my biggest question for you, Sam, is this, is um, the city clerk records room for the basement of the annex building. So would in a sense, we have to wait for that records room or archiving room to be built, prior to this whole annex building to be built, or how is that gonna work? Or, or would she, would, we may have to wait for that to be built until we get funding to build the whole building?
Yeah, um, the, the best practice on that would be to build it when um, the building is, is built. Uh, standalone uh, building, after we looked at that space, we, we, you know, sort of decided that it, it, that, that premium space adjacent to City Hall, to have just one, a one-story, uh, you know, small square foot building for storage, probably was not the best use of that. And, and you can kind of see in this rendering, this is the most accurate depiction of the park. You, you can, you can see the hole there, i- i- there, there's an empty hole there, it's, it's, it's a space. If you can, run the cursor around that parking area, it's just to show, so that, that space right there. Uh, we think that, 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 that space uh, deserves attention. Uh, something that will, you know, speak to the Zoccolo as well as, you know, integrate with City Hall. And that was the idea. Uh, you know, behind going with uh, a, a bigger annex type building.
No, and it's a great design, don't get me wrong, it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful building. It looks, I mean, you know, it'll completely change the, the way City Hall looks. It's a really great building, but.
Mayor Protem, I just wanna add to that. The idea is it's not about to, to improve how the City Hall looks, but it's really about to prove how the City Hall functions to the community. Like I said, uh, uh, you know, from libraries to whatever services may be required that maybe are in a different location, they get maybe, considered to move into this location to kind of centralize city function. It, so it's, it's idea is both, aesthetics and function. I think that's the best way to think about it.
I agree that it, it is a beautiful design and it looks beautiful. And in addition to, we need to make sure that it's functional for our city. I feel we need to have more conversations, have study sessions and have discussions, on the possible uses of this building before we make a decision and continue designing it. So that we can all bring our ideas, whether it would be feasible and, and would have actually something that would work for our residents. So I think, again, more discussions amongst council, and to bring forth ideas from everybody, because I'm sure everybody has great ideas, to see if it is a building that we can use, um, for retail or what have you. I know we need a records retention, building for our city clerks, and that is priority because there's nowhere for her to put uh, put the records. And so, we need to think of a way to get that, uh, in a more affordable way with, without going away from the look that we have. So I think more discussions is necessary from all of us.
Absolutely. The intention or the purpose for tonight's uh, presentation is more of a sneak peek. This is our first stab at it. And so we just wanted to uh, show the council and, you know, see if, you know, we're on the right track or, or, you know, do we turn around, do we do something different? But, um, this is not finished in any way, shape or form and um, a- at this point, the, the Zoccolo uh, project i- is what was the uh, feature uh, of tonight. Letting you know what the cost estimate and when we plan to go to bid on that. Uh, these items are part of the same scope of work, but they're not finished and there'll be more conversations about it, uh, with the council to see how, uh, you know, what we're gonna do in terms of, uh, you know, finalizing the conceptual.
Sam and Scott, just very briefly, on the question of restroom accessibility for the Zoccolo, I think the intent was, the restrooms will be in the retail buildings, but as we know, once a retailer, operator is there, usually there's no access, to the restroom by the public. So are, are we thinking that um, folks, not the large gatherings, of course, for large gatherings, we would need multiple other restrooms, but, for just everyday use, if there's a group of, small group of folks in the Zoccolo, where, where would they go to the restroom?
The restrooms actually do not c- connect into the retail space. They actually connect to the outside. There's a, we do not have a plan, maybe.
So the restrooms at the retail building are public accessible?
Okay, those are public restrooms.
And, and so as part of the um, third floor uh, City Hall improvements, we're also gonna be improving, or upgrading or making improvements to the restrooms just out here. So we'll have restrooms on that end of the uh, park and then there's restrooms here. The annex building will introduce a, a third set of restrooms.
Okay.
Sam, I agree with um, Councilmember Abula, and that, you know, maybe we should have a more thorough conversation on this item.
Yes.
Since it is, I think it's being presented to us for the first time. I think that would be appropriate.
No, and, and that, uh, that is the intention.
Yeah, I think the idea was, was to start the conversation, not to uh, command the conversation, but to kind of give the, a better understanding of what's, what can happen. I mean, you can actually make this more, it can, it can be a taller building. It doesn't even have to be two stories. It could be four stories. I think the, the zoning code allows it to be taller, but it was just kind of a more reasonable solution to, that, for things that are going on in the city, just to kind of start the conversation, but, not to kind of d- give you direction on this is what it's gonna be. It's, it's, again, it's just to start the conversation.
Alright, uh, if there's no other questions, then that, that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, we will move to closed session.